Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of July 26th. If you'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. I was on vacation last week. I went to Thornton, New Hampshire. It's kind of near the Concord and Meredith area. Family and I went hiking around. One of the disappointing things was I was, I had to miss Bob Holt's retirement party. Bob Holt's right there, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize what has already been recognized but needs to be recognized again. Bob has worked for the town for 30 years. He was in the Department of Public Works. He did some wonderful things, including keep Bristol clean. If you've shown up to the DPW on a Saturday morning and then went out and about to pick up trash, Bob was the massive proponent and also the leader there. Obviously, he had a lot of help from a lot of people, but without Bob, I don't think it would have gone as long as it did or continue is, and have the vehemence that it did. Bob, do you mind coming up and just sharing a couple of words with us in all the time that you spent with the town?
We're visiting on the thing here. We're visiting.
I think it's on.
I just want to thank all yours for your support and all you used to show up. I was amazed the amount of people and kids, even in the rain, that would show up for Earth Day. I want to thank the police chief, the town administrator, everybody on the council for all their support. And I tell people to this day, they don't understand, we had a party up at Jackie's, I know you were away, and we had a lot of fun and I got a lot of awards and I appreciate it, but if you love your job and you love the people you work for, it's very, very easy to do 30 years. It's like nothing. And I just happen to be one of them guys. I had heavy equipment. I was heavy equipment. I was spared all the jobs, so every week I didn't know where I was going, and that was the fun part. And I just loved my job and loved the people, and I want to thank you for 30 years.
Big round of applause for Bob. So Bob started out as a laborer, went to a truck driver, recycling truck driver, packer driver, and then anything else that was necessary, including the heavy equipment operator, is where he stopped. We very much, this council, this town administrator, very much appreciate all of, all of what you've done and the leadership that you showed in that position. So once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Next items are submission of minutes of previous meetings, items A, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The, the, the next item is a public hearing. This is to consider the petition of Barney Birchfield, Five Deer Run Road, request opportunity to maintain town property. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, director of public works, director of community development, and chief of police, all to approve, some with certain conditions.
So this is a public hearing, so we're going to open the public hearing. Just to remind everybody, this is to maintain the property. This isn't giving the property away. This still belongs to the town, but this resident would like to maintain this property that is adjacent to his property. So, we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Not in favor, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Please come up to the podium.
Now, to my understanding, my name is Tammy Del Mira. This is my husband Neil. Our property is adjacent to the Deer Run entrance, and we actually have been maintaining one side of that entrance.
Welcome first.
Thank you. And I just don't understand what the concept, why the town needs to maintain it when my husband's perfectly happy maintaining it.
It's not the town maintaining it. This, this resident Barney Birchfield at Five Deer Run Road has asked to maintain a portion of that property.
Oh, because by what this is saying, he's asking for a license to maintain, consider a license to maintain the town property.
Sure, so he's asking our permission to maintain that property.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
I mean, he's been doing it right along, so if...
So I think, can I, can I jump in?
Sure, definitely.
So, I'm very appreciative, I know the town is very appreciative of your maintenance of the property, and that would be like cutting the grass and so forth.
Right.
We're very happy that you're doing that.
It just, when it's not maintained, it tends to make my house look like it's not maintained, and I put a lot of effort into maintaining that area that hasn't been maintained for a while.
So this gentleman, as I understood it, was specifically looking to plant along the stone walls that are at the entrance to the neighborhood. They wanted to plant, like, plant hostas and flowers there, which, you know, he can't really do that unless the town agrees that he can do it.
Oh, okay.
So that's what this is for.
Oh, okay. Would it be upsetting of anybody if we still cut the lawn on, I mean, my husband has a tractor.
We can certainly have that discussion. I personally don't have objection to it, but...
He just enjoys it. It's his quiet time.
You can come to my house if you have a lot of fun. Okay, okay, okay. Just throwing it out there.
So maybe we could work out an agreement where this gentleman continues to cut the grass, and then the other gentleman plants the flowers, that we just, we just want everybody to get along, but we're so appreciative that you're all working to keep that area beautiful.
Well, it's our property, and it's butts to a nice area, and we want to keep it nice, you know?
We appreciate the efforts.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to go with, that was for this. So I'm going to say, is there anyone to speak in, sorry, to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What's this council's pleasure?
Like to make a motion to grant the request by Barney Birchfield, Five Deer Run Road, to maintain the town property as specified with all the department recommendations in front of the stone walls. And to thank him and thank all the residents, it'll beautify the landscape of Hope Street as people pass by too. So we thank you, and that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck, and thank you for doing that.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of town council, is another advertised public hearing regarding lease of the Wally School. I think the council is informed that the potential leasie has withdrawn his request to lease the building.
Lou, what's the appropriate motion in this case?
I think that would be a receive and file at this point.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to receive and file. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Also, from the director of community development, this is a public hearing on the transportation improvement program that is typically referred to as the TIP for FY 2018 to 2027. You have a communication on that project from the director of community development.
So this is a public hearing, correct, Mr. Clerk? Our, our community development director went outside. So, Mr. Administrator, can you speak to this at all? I know that Diane is certainly well-versed in it.
I can.
I know I'm going to open up the public hearing, but I wanted to give everyone some info.
The main disappointment was, and I think we touched upon it at the last council meeting, the TIP is a transportation improvement program. It's a schedule of projects that the Department of Transportation has statewide, and we were informed that the Hope Street sidewalk improvements, specifically north of Washington Street, was delayed another two or three years. Our director of community development has put a new application in together. We're going to apply for the same project under an alternative program to see if we can perhaps get it done sooner than the two or three-year delay that they're proposing. So that's where we're at.
Thank you.
So is, are we opening?
Well, I'm going to open it up to the public hearing first, and then we can have dialogue on the council level.
So is that in conjunction with the TAP program of the Rhode Island DOT, of the transportation alternative program, and to explain to the public that program is for municipalities that actually are ready to do projects and fund them, the state will commit on the back end to reimburse those funds, not according to their time schedule, because we know the state of Rhode Island has a long list of projects, but if certain municipalities such as Bristol, we've been waiting for sidewalks, we've been working with our capital improvement plan year after year for the important projects to keep going. I know we have a lot of important items, part of our municipal budget that we're contending with, but if we can get some small-scale projects to expedite the timeline, I think it benefits all the residents if we can work with our capital budget and the state of Rhode Island. To that note, Diane, I would like to see, I know it's been a while, but I would like to see more meetings involving ourselves of workshops with the Rhode Island DOT. I know we get these briefings and public hearings, Mr. Administrator, but I know myself, I would like to keep a more, you know how I'm rigid about timelines and projects, but I think it's more fluid for this council and the department heads to actually have them come down and meet more often so we know exactly how to convey to the public of those timelines going forward, so.
So the reason why this is a public hearing is that this sets priorities. That's why there's open dialogue from the public, so you can input whether you believe that these are appropriate priorities, and those priorities include, but are not limited to, I sound like a lawyer, going from Hope Street, on Hope Street, from Washington all the way up to the Warren line, as you know or may not know, there's kind of sidewalks over there, and there kind of isn't. So this is, this is a focus on, on doing those things. I don't want to go too far, because this is a public hearing, but I wanted everyone to understand why we were having a public hearing. So there's two programs. There's the TIP and the TAP program. State, it's crazy. Transportation Improvement Program and Transportation Alternative Programs. Those are the two things that we're trying to take advantage of. As the administrator said very well, we were on track to have Phase Two of the Hope Street improved, but the state has pushed that back. So they had a 10-year plan, but to call it simply, they changed their 10-year plan. So we're trying to circumvent that and still get those things done, because we truly believe that it is extremely important that those things are improved. So, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Certainly.
It might be a good idea if Diane explains what some of the proposed projects would be.
I'm happy with that. Please.
Sure, thank you. So I did review this with the town administrator and the director of public works. We have high, medium, and low priority projects. As you said, we will be writing in our application for the transportation improvement program and the transportation alternative program for some of these projects. So the high priority projects, which we have identified are the intersection safety improvements to Medicum Avenue, which are signal upgrades in left-turn lanes. That is currently in process, but I suggested that we keep it on the high priority project list, just to make sure that...
Because the other plans change, let's just make sure we have...
We're just going to make sure it's happening, right. Sidewalks and curbing and resurfacing on Hope Street from Washington Street North to the Warren Town Line, and then from Constitution Street South to the Roger Williams University. Silver Creek Bridge and flooding mitigation at Route 114. Those are the high priority projects. The medium priority projects are the design of the corridor improvements on Medicum Avenue, and then the replacing the curbing and resurfacing on Medicum Avenue from the Warren Town Line south to Ferry Road to the university. And then intersection safety improvements at Ferry Road, Old Ferry Road and Medicum. For those of you who've been around a while, you might remember those are the roundabouts that we were hoping would be designed and installed to eliminate some of those hazardous crossovers there in front of the university. And then the low priority projects are Cold State Park lighting, Milcutt Bridge at Milcutt Title Inlet, and the Harrisoff Marine Museum. The Cold State Park lighting is really a DEM initiative. That's why we put it on ours as a low priority, because they are taking lead on that. And the Harrisoff Marine Museum, that received funding years ago under the transportation alternative program category. It is not a town project, but it does need to be on the town's list of projects, because it is in town, so that's why that's also low, but to keep it on the list. So those are the projects that we've identified, and I think one of the other things tonight is if anybody has any other projects that we might want to add, we can look at those too.
Diane, I just had a quick question on Bullet Two and the high priority projects. I know some residents had reached out in regards to if we're redoing those curbs all the way to Warren, if definitely crosswalks could be included. I know it goes back many, many years, but a lot of residents in that northern part of that area have trouble crossing the street and getting to the bus stops, so just want to make a note of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we discussed this, but they just released some more money, and this is what it's about, is being proactive and planning with all of us, is, when you talk about Silver Creek Bridge and flooding mitigation, or the Milcutt Title Inlet, is there any way, and this is what I mean about we all have to have more workshops and meetings with the state so we can have these conversations instead of just briefings? I know I want more information on, and you do such a good job, Diane, is the DEM just came out with another $4 million for the flooding hazard mitigation. I think we should go after that, because we have these projects, and it would be cost-efficient for us as a town with these shovel-ready projects, so, okay?
Right, so the, these are, these are state projects, so the DEM grant is, we're targeting those for some town projects, but this would be a state project.
You can't coincide it with the alternatives with the state and have those conversations?
We can try to see how flexible they are.
Yeah, okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. What's this council's pleasure?
Do they take action, or is it just a public hearing?
It's just a public hearing.
I don't think there's necessarily to take action.
Motion to receive and file. The, the information?
I think just the fact that you had the public hearing is sufficient.
Okay.
Great.
Okay.
The, the next item is ordinance 2017-08. This was an amendment to the so-called recycling ordinance to remove the required commercial account as specified. This is second reading for adoption.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion?
Just wanted to say, I think we should still keep track of the commercial trash pickup, because we know that's constantly increasing, and we should, you know, just keep track of what we're getting charged for, you know, you know, where, it's all going under the, under the regular cap, but still just know whether we're going forward or backwards on it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item C2, this is ordinance 2017-09. This particular ordinance prohibits having dogs in certain parts of town parks. This is a second reading for adoption.
Mr. Administrator, and I know that Director Burke isn't here, could you just speak on this real quick to give the public some clarity on what we're trying to accomplish here?
Yeah, what we're, what we're trying to do is eliminate the dogs being on playgrounds in our memorial gardens. The playground issue is more of a safety issue with the children, and the memorial parks is more of a maintenance issue, where we have remains left behind by the pet owners.
Thank you.
Can I just ask you a quick question, Steve? I know at the, some of the concerts that we had for 4th of July, actually, someone, a constituent stopped me to talk about the very issue of all the dogs that were down there. Would that, would this prohibit them from being there?
Specifically Independence Park, no. Independence Park doesn't fit into here, but you know...
If I might add, because I did, I did speak to Walter about it specifically, because that question did come up from some constituents, and I believe that the plan is, the best way to describe it would be those, there's those three memorial parks, the Firefighters' Memorial Park, the Veterans War Garden, and, and Veterans Park, where they would be specifically prohibited, and then at other parks where there are those playground jungle gym swing type places, typically where there's the, these woodchips. So that's what he plans based upon this, to, to put signs up, to have that prohibited. So the general parks where there's, you know, sidewalks, grassy areas, et cetera, it's they're not prohibited there, at least not at this point.
So could I ask, Mike, and maybe if you could ask Walter, if they maybe could come back to us with some report on the feasibility, especially when there's big events? I think there was some concern, because the loud noises, some of the dogs get jittery, like, why would people bring all these dogs there with all those people? I mean, there were thousands and thousands of people, and if that's something that we should be considering, if we don't ban it, you know, outright, because people want to go run with their animal, you know, with their, with their dog, then when there's a large event, such as the concerts, things like that, is that, I don't know if other towns have done that, or?
Let me do this, it's a good idea, let me talk to Walter and get some feedback and...
Could you just let us know what you're working on, like, at the next meeting, even if it's not finalized?
Understood.
Thank you.
Is it something that will fall under this section where you would like us to continue this?
No, no, I think you should adopt what's here tonight.
And then you can stat to it.
There's nothing else to add.
Okay, all right.
Has there been consideration to prohibiting dogs to some of these parks that may be visited by some of our veterans who may utilize service dogs in their continued adjustment? The same people that would want to visit these same parks?
There would be exempt, maybe? Yeah, there'd be exempt.
Yeah, bona fide service dogs.
Is it something maybe we want to clarify in this ordinance? Because the ordinance seems to be very clear that no dogs whatsoever, or do you feel that there's a, another ordinance which overstands this ordinance?
Well, there's, there's a state law on service dogs being allowed, so I can look and see if it's actually in our ordinance, but the state law would control anyhow. We'd never ban someone with a service dog from any area that it's public space.
So it seems that this ordinance bans all dogs under any circumstance, even on leashes in these parks? So I'm wondering if we want to refer, either refer to that ordinance or provide provisions within this ordinance which allow service dogs in these areas?
So when I come back to you with the other issue on the concerts, et cetera, I'll, I'll give you a memo on that.
And it does call out without a leash, you know what I mean? I mean, so...
With a leash.
With a leash.
Any dogs?
Any dogs without?
Any dogs with a leash.
With a leash too?
Yep, with a leash. And I think, have there been actual incidents which have led to the development of this ordinance related to public safety with leashed dogs?
I think the, the problem, as, as described to me, is really that people will bring the dogs in there and they leave something behind that we don't want them to.
There's an ordinance to prevent that.
Right, but there, that says you're supposed to pick it up, but it doesn't, it doesn't seem to work, okay?
Okay, so this ordinance is to address the, the enforcement issue of the picking up of dogs, the lack of enforcement issues of picking up after the dogs?
Apparently. I mean, I think the other thing too is that these, several of these have monuments, okay, in them that are pretty visible, and without getting into too graphic detail, there's something else that gets left behind there that doesn't necessarily get picked up, if you follow me?
I'm not following you.
The dogs pee on the monuments, and people don't care, and they just let that happen. So there was observation that that was occurring. So this was something, if the dog isn't there at all, and that's how it was described to me, then it wouldn't happen.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this only restricts the dogs at our hollowed grounds, memorial parks, the Veterans Garden, the Veterans Memorial Park, and the Firefighters Memorial Park. I think if there are veterans there with their dog, I think we have the common decency to allow them to be there. Furthermore, state law does supersede local, so that, as far as enforcement, it wouldn't be an issue. It's a maintenance issue, and as far as the playground, it's not inclusive of the entire park, it's the playground area. Whether a dog's on a leash or not, we're not willing to take that chance to put children in harms, children in harms way. So I think it's a good ordinance, and I know the administrator supports it, and the Parks Recreation Director proposed it.
Is there any other discussion? What's this council's pleasure?
Make a motion to adopt the article for prohibiting and constitute violations in certain parks that are specified, and to include all governing state laws to be part of that, until you could come up with the language, Mr. Solicitor. I think it's safe to add that as an addendum at this time, and I think this is, I understand the intention, but just like anything, I respect Councilman Tiska's views, along with the many views of dog owners, and these are steps that we can certainly visit in the future, that if we observe something and anything that doesn't work out, we can revisit. So that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
You know, I think it's important to consider the enforcement of these, and, or even the public communication of what the desired behavior is, and I think, you know, one way to encourage public behavior is to pass ordinance, but I think, you know, sometimes a more successful route to compliance is whether it's through outreach, communication, maybe cameras, individual approach, approachments, so that we can solve this problem without having an impact on a large population and visiting our hollowed grounds. I think there are some people who have companions, maybe not service dogs, who may want to visit and honor family members with a beloved one that has four legs, and I think that this ordinance is maybe a little aggressive on how we want to enforce and address some of the problems we're having. So I don't think that we should address this via an ordinance, I think we should, there's other ways that we can address the problems that I think our clerk states, and maybe more successful than simply passing ordinances.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
So we have a three to two. In favor, yes. I'm in favor, three to two.
Okay.
I'm sorry, so...
I was Mr. Tiska, and who else?
Mr. Tiska and Mr. Sweeney opposed.
Okay, the, the next ordinance is 2017-10, and this is for an amendment to the town code to create a coordinator of senior services position within the Department of Parks and Recreation. I will tell you that per the town, excuse me, the town charter, there was a petition submitted by Maria Doherty and others to require the council to have a public hearing. As you know, the practice for that would be to have an advertised public hearing, which requires us to put an ad in the newspaper to say that the public hearing is going to take place, and the earliest possible time that you could have that public hearing is August 23rd.
Is that a council meeting?
Yes.
So we just need a motion and a fight?
So move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So there's a motion and a second to call for a public hearing on August 23rd, which is our next scheduled council meeting? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next ordinance is ordinance 2017-11, and this is to increase the term of the harbor master from one year to three years. This is the first reading.
Motion, this constitutes the first reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is item D1, and this is the, the petition of Bristol Express, 1064 Hope Street, requesting a vitaling license. This is new ownership. You have recommendations provided by the fire chief, the economic development coordinator, and chief of police, all to approve.
Motion to approve the vitaling license based on the stated recommendations.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
From the same petitioner, you have a request for holiday sales license, and you have similar recommendations from the same three parties.
Motion to approve holiday sales license based on the, based on the recommendations, stated recommendations.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On this one, I'll say good luck on both. I meant to say it at the first time.
Okay. The next is item D3, and this is the petition of Maria Tara doing business as Galleries Tap House, 188 Bain Street, request for temporary outdoor expansion of Class BB intoxicated beverage license to include the adjacent driveway area of the building. You have recommendation from the town administrator and fire chief to approve with certain conditions, and a late item recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police to also approve with certain conditions.
Motion to approve the temporary outdoor expansion of the Class BB license based on the stated recommendations.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I just have a couple of questions. I believe the applicant's here. Um, the questions I have is obviously in support of this, but I just want to make sure that due to the guidelines and everything with our outdoor seating, will there be a host or hostess? And will the food be coming from the side or from the front of the restaurant to that seating that will be in the driveway?
From the side door.
From the side, side door?
Yeah. And I'm just asking for between four, six tables, no more than that. Very small.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that, you know, it just coincides with, you know, having the guidelines of our ordinance of having someone there and it's, you know, petitioned off.
Everything will come through the side door, not from the back of.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
The next item is the petition of Courtney Poisant doing business as Common Pub and Grill, 421 Wood Street, request for one day Sunday dancing and entertainment license for August 6th. You have the recommendation of the town administrator and fire chief to approve and also the chief of police to approve with certain conditions.
Motion to approve with all the recommendations and special conditions.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the petition of Nikki Antiska for East Bay Food Pantry, 3, excuse me, 532 Wood Street, request for one day dancing and entertainment license for September 9th, 2017. You have recommendations from the town administrator, fire chief, director of public works, and chief of police to approve.
Motion to approve one day, one day sales license, what is that?
Dancing and entertainment.
Dancing, there it is. One day dancing and entertainment license based on the recommendations.
Second.
Is this your wife?
It is my wife.
So you need to recuse.
I've recused myself from this vote.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next petition is item D6. This is the petition of John Garrett doing business as Dollar General, 1150 Hope Street, request for holiday sales license. You have the recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, economic development coordinator, and chief of police.
Motion to grant approval of the holiday sales license upon all recommendations.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And D7, you have the petition of Jennifer Little for Rhode Island Warrior Foundation for Frank Court Warren requesting for one day dancing and entertainment license for August 5th, 2017. You have the recommendation provided by the town administrator and fire chief to approve with certain conditions, and there's a late item recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police to also approve with certain conditions.
Motion to approve the one day dancing and entertainment license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Chief, I did not get an opportunity to read this, this was a last minute. Could you just share those conditions that you were proposing?
Yes, initially we were a little concerned they were going to have this venue towards Medicum Avenue in the first field. And as you can imagine, that being right on Medicum Avenue, that's a concern to the noise level in that area and also the traffic. Sergeant Morse has since met with the individuals responsible for that request, and it's my understanding as of today, it's going to be moved to the lower end of the farm. However, there are some questions with regards to detail officers. I don't want to speak out of line, but it's my understanding that there were tickets that were out there as of yesterday without it being approved by the council or the chief, myself having any say in this. So we have explained to them that number one, it needs to be approved before we move forward. Second, we'll, I'll make a decision on how many detail officers will be assigned there. This is a new thing, and I'm being told it could be 700 to 1,500 people. So I'm a little concerned until I get exactly the amount of people that'll be attending this event. And that'll be, I'm sure, by the tickets, because it's my understanding, again, the tickets that were out as early as yesterday. And I know that for a fact, they were delivered to the police department and asked if anyone there was interested. One of the young officers took them. He was, under the understanding they were for veterans, he was actually going to deliver them to the veterans home until he learned that that wasn't the case. So that individual was contacted and asked to pick up the tickets. He hasn't picked them up, I have them here, just in case he's here, we're returning to them. But that's my concern, we need to know how many tickets are going to be sold so we can control that accordingly and staff it properly by police personnel, whether it's, you know, 700 or 1,500. As you know, this is something new, I want to wish them the best, but until we understand that there's going to be a good group there, good cooperative people who take care of what's going to happen there, the alcohol that's going to be sold there, that's the concern of whose license that's going to go under and make sure that they're tip certified.
So what is the Warrior Foundation then? Is it, I mean, when you said it, you thought it was for veterans and then you found out it wasn't, is that it? I thought that was, I thought it wasn't like for warrior, like, you know, like wounded warrior type.
I really don't have all that information for you. I think maybe Lou could verify what the application was, I just.
Is the applicant here if they wanted to speak? Absolutely.
I thought I saw it from there.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council and sergeant. The reason why we had marketed the event prior is because we weren't going to sell tickets at the event up until about a week and a half ago when a major band entered the picture. It's a U2 tribute band, and we realized that there might be a larger crowd than initially anticipated. And so with that said, we understood that if we're going to sell tickets on the premises day of, that we needed to obtain this event license. So we didn't know that information until most recently. And we did stop our marketing efforts at that point in terms of the general public. We held everything back until we had this meeting and wanted to fill out the paperwork for detail and work with the police department with this event. In terms of the question regarding alcohol, I think Mrs. Perella, you had asked that question, we have.
I asked about the organization.
The organization. The gentleman here that has started the organization is Mark Reinhardt, and I'll have him take the podium.
Hi, I'm Mark Reinhardt. The Rhode Island Warrior Foundation started last year, and we dedicate everything that we do to helping support Bristol Warren community. We do three events a year, and this will be our third. And 100% of our proceeds go towards the veterans home. We've helped the recreation department. We do things silently, we don't look for advertising, we just look to help in any way that we can. I think we fed 75 families this past holiday season through just donations from people that, you know, wear this logo. And we just try to, try to work behind the scenes to do anything that we can to help support people in need. We saw that there was a real need at the veterans home for support in the recreation department specifically. We dedicated time there in helping out, and we donated money there through our efforts. And 100% of the proceeds for this event will go directly to the veterans home the day after. We were just looking to raise awareness, it really started building fast. And when, you know, we had major bands come, we had to kind of change our stance. So I appreciate the support that we've received and the guidance. This is our first time doing an event like this, we want it to go smooth, we want it to be good for the town. And, you know, we appreciate any advice that we can get in making this a successful, safe event.
Well, we certainly support and commend you on this endeavor with this event, and we thank you for understanding our position along with the police, you know, for the safety of all the guests who want to join this. And I hope this is an advertisement for August 5th between 3:00 and 9:00 PM at Monhope Farm. I guess you can get tickets at roteileinwarriorfoundation.org or .com, is it .org or?
Actually, they're going to be, we have hard copy tickets, and I apologize for that. Yesterday, that was me delivering the tickets. And you can get them on Eventbrite, we have hard copy tickets that we passed out to people that can help support in any way. We also have six veterans coming down to speak that day through veteran spotlights just to kind of share their experience and their concerns and needs. We also have active duty members that are part of our foundation that are here today.
Thank you.
We have, we've had over 500 people at this point wear this, this logo at this point, and we have an army of people ready to help anywhere that we can. We know that there's a need here.
Sounds like a great event, and I hope it goes smooth, I'm sure we'll all support it. Going forward, as a council, and we all talk about this, you know, lines of communication, once something is created from any organization, feel free to contact any one of us to answer any questions. That way, we can have everything already set to go when it's instances like this, especially for safety and traffic and whatnot. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second to approve with all conditions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
The next item is item F1, this is the petition of Nikki Antiska for East Bay Food Pantry, request council permission to serve and sell alcoholic beverages at the Bristol Maritime Center for the previously mentioned fundraising event. You have recommendations from the town administrator, fire chief, director of public works, and chief of police to approve with certain conditions.
I'll make a motion.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'd like to recuse myself from this vote, Mr. Solicitor. I may have a form to fill out, I'd appreciate it.
Did you fill out the first one?
He's saving them.
He's saving them?
Yeah.
I filled the first one, this is for both, I can.
Yeah, you can. It's the same event, yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
So continuing on, along with the application and everything specified upon all the department recommendations, and also Lou to make sure the liquor liability insurance is filed along with the petition when it is granted. With that, I wish much success to this event every year. I wish, again, they would change the date too, because last year they had it this weekend. And I will support the event, but I go away every year for another charity this weekend. So, again, maybe we can talk to the councilman's wife maybe to get another date, but I wish it the best, so.
I do think it's nice to have it at this, at this location, though, see the Maritime Center being used in this way. That would be a cool thing.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I do, I think Mary's second.
You did?
No. That was my second, yeah, anyway. I didn't hear that you were looking for a second, I just.
Sorry, I told you I did.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
The next item is the Historic District Commission. There are three positions that terms have expired this past month, and you have the request of Victor Cabral of 122 Monhope Avenue who would like to be reappointed, and also Benjamin Bergenholz of 385 High Street would like to be appointed. And you have the correspondence from Thomas Enright, 129 Papa Squash Road, who is not seeking reappointment, that was a late item.
Motion to reappoint Mr. Victor Cabral and Mr. Benjamin Bergenholz to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire July 2020. And also, can we send a letter of thanks to Mr. Enright for his years of service on the Historic District Commission, please?
Seconds then.
There's a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the first item under Old Business. This is from Council Montesca regarding the update of the website, this is continued from June 7th.
I'd like to receive and file this agenda item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, receive and file, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item from Councilman Stewart regarding trash and recycling receptacles initiative along town roads and bike path intersections, this was continued from June 7th.
I don't usually like to do this, Mr. Chairman, but unfortunately, Mr. McBride, our director of public works and our director of recreation, Walter is on vacation at this time, and Walter had some supplemental information I would like him to convey to the public, but also to this council, there's an ongoing thing where we need to know if we support this, who will be picking them up. I know there's a discussion ongoing about the barrels throughout the town that this council and the administration just needs to be, you know, up to speed on who's going to do it. So I think with those components, when they return, other than the findings of the DEM and their recommendation, if we could just postpone this to the August meeting, I mean, at this juncture, this would probably be something for the next summer or something, but thank you.
So we're going to continue this to the 23rd?
Yes, please.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to continue it to the 23rd, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is correspondence from Mario Andrade, superintendent of schools, Bristol Warren Regional School District, request use of Colt School Fund not to exceed $140,000 for proposed Colt School facade and Walkway Plaza project. You have correspondence from the solicitor, reminding the council of its Colt and Gatoris School Fund policy.
Chairman Silva, did you want to speak on behalf of this request?
If you have any questions, I will, Mr. Chairman. I, I, if I recall, the agreement or the policy for use of Colt and Gatoris School Funds was to use the, nothing more than the accumulated interest from, from a year. It's been at least two years since we last touched any of the interest that accumulated from that fund, and this was a project that was in the, in the works. And it may be looking to utilize a little bit more than was earned in one year, but not more than what should have been earned in the last couple of years.
I spoke with our treasurer, Julie, in regards to this, and although I do believe that this coincides with that policy, I would like this council to consider at our next meeting to adjust that policy so it has a four-year average on this. And the reason why is that this year, this certainly is well within those guidelines, so there's absolutely no problem with that. But last year, the fund lost about $47,000. So I would like us to consider the larger realm on this one. We have a one-year policy on it. Again, this request absolutely fits into that, and honestly, would actually fit into a four-year policy. But because we had a loss on it, and because this is a significant dollar figure asked against the Colt Fund, I, and I also believe it's very appropriate use of the funds.
Thank you.
I would like us at our next meeting to consider to amend our policy to use a four-year average that would include monies that are taken out, losses, gains, unrealized, realized, the whole kind of big picture, so it's a little bit more holistic approach to it. On a side note, this is not tax dollar funds. This is the Colt Fund put aside by the Colt family, and the council is the fiduciary agent in regards to that dollar figure, and it is for things, and actually, our policy speaks to this, specifically like this, to do the repairs that would normally have to come out of a school budget, but now get, excuse me, come out of the Colt Fund, like marble repair and all the things that really need to be done that are being proposed here. So I'm a proponent of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm definitely open to your proposal, I was just curious if we could also understand why it lost 47,000, maybe we can ask Julie when that discussion comes up?
We can, in fact, I did ask that, and she's, she's ready to speak on it, it just, it was, the market was less than quality, and the market came back, and it came back with a vengeance, actually. And this fund increased quite significantly. So we realized not only those losses, but the requests that's put in. So we realized not only those losses, but the requests that's put in front of us. So we are still even ahead after all of those losses and everything else. So we're still in a really good place.
Our hope is that the earnings will continue to let the fund, you know, perpetuate itself indefinitely so we can do this going forward continuously.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to release with the authorization of the amount not to exceed the $140,000 from the Colt School Fund for all the projects specified presented here tonight. And thank you, Mr. Silver, along with your colleagues from the School Administration Committee for joining us here this evening, so.
Second the motion.
Julie?
Just a quick question on timing of the release of funds. Do we want to wait until the end of the construction? Do we want to release ahead of time? What's your?
My suggestion, and I don't know if my colleagues are amenable to this, is we'll defer to you on that, and whatever seems appropriate.
I'll work with Pauline.
You'll work with Pauline and whatever's appropriate.
Hi, Pauline. We can work together on that. Okay, great.
Hopefully, make some more money. Yeah, keep it making money, getting the last possible.
Yeah, have it sitting in our funds making money. See that?
Market keeps going well.
As long as you can.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item is item I2, and this is from Councilman Antisca regarding impact of state budget impasse on future state aid to education.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So I asked for this agenda item so I could share with my colleagues what I learned at the budget subcommittee meeting with the school committee. Many of us have read what other communities are dealing with relating to the state budget impasse. And I think Bristol's no different in some ways, except for one, whereas our school department has, in some ways, prepared for this, as long as it doesn't go too long. And I think it's important to make this council aware of what happens if it does go too long. You know, there's no emergency now, and I believe that the school committee is working through some of the short-term resolutions and managing the reduction in state aid through its current operational budget. However, as the numbers, as time goes on and the numbers get bigger and bigger, this may lead to a situation which will directly affect this council, the town of Bristol's residents, and our future. So, you know, I think it's important for us to consider these impacts and start to have a conversation around what our long-term strategy is towards funding education. Regardless of funding formula, I think it's important to look at both eight months from now, when we look at the budget time, when state aid's going to be decreasing significantly, compounded with maybe a structural deficit that this impasse may cause, and continuing needs that our youth have to become competitive and relevant to today's workforce. So I put this out in front of the council with the hopes that we can continue to have this as an agenda item, to talk about ways that we can look at least three years ahead from now to understand what sort of commitment we're able to make relating to providing funding for our school district and providing education to all of our youth.
Well, I certainly commend Councilman Antisca for bringing this forth, as we stated last meeting, and which we will be doing going forward. And I think that's the question of the transparency and the involvement of all parties involved, because there's many layers involved with this, many options for all of us in this chamber in both communities. I believe the dialogue does have to take place more often. We talk about it, but in that space alone of that continued dialogue you're looking for, or different alternatives, I think we have to be in emergency mode. My opinion is we should be in emergency mode all the time at this juncture, even though we're addressing it going into the executive session now. I think we have to be transparent to the public also. So that's my views on it.
No, Andy, I agree with you in regards to talking about this more often. I think at the end of the day, we're going to need to have with the school, a, some sort of budget financing summit where we all kind of get together, where the finance, the council, maybe even a consultant, and we start talking about, you know, what is the, what's the enrollment going to look like? What's the capital spending plan for the 10 years? Those sort of things really started to get into the weeds as to where we're going to be, and what is that need going to be going forward. You know, we go to the joint finance committees, and they're great, but for me, at the end of the day, it's sort of like we take a vote on the bottom line, and we don't have that really great, awesome discussion about what's going forward. So I think just more dialogue, I think more times where we sit down and really get in a little bit of the nitty-gritty of what's going on.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's helpful, but, you know, the reality is this, that, again, worst-case scenario, this budget impasse isn't resolved quickly. It could be anywhere from $100,000 to $800,000, which creates a structural deficit within the school system, which will have to be replenished through a future budget request, on top of reduced state aid of a few hundred thousand dollars. So this is a net million-dollar difference from what we're spending today and what we need to spend next year on education. And, you know, I think it's important that we continue, you know, we don't wait until next year to start a budgeting process. I think we need to start our budgeting process now with what we know, and not just for next year, but for the next three years. And I think in that budgeting process, we need to start blocking in some of these known big numbers. And as the numbers are refined, we can continue to adjust and set our priorities. But I think, I think it's maybe not typical, but I think it's important that we set up a initiative to start our budget for next year soon, and start blocking into some of these big numbers. You know, we've already seen some new items that we're going to have to budget for. You know, we all hope that we can implement a tax abatement or reduction policy for our volunteer firefighters and emergency rescue personnel, which may be a few hundred thousand dollars. These are some pretty big numbers, and I think we need to start making some hard choices today. Instead of flipping a switch at the next budget season, we need to start transitioning this fiscal year into a budget which takes into account our priorities for funding education and taking care of our volunteer personnel.
More proactive.
Is there any other discussion? What's your pleasure on this item, Mr. Antisca?
Well, I'd like to continue this item until the next meeting's agenda, but I do ask that the council consider some ideas that we can take action upon at the next meeting related to setting our priorities through this budgeting process, which I'd like to begin sooner than later, around what our educational needs are for next fiscal year.
So I heard, continue this to the next meeting? So you like to?
That's correct, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion. I just, I guess, just in regard to the scope specifically, what are you, what are you looking for us to come back with? I mean, I would think our discussion would be better suited with, as a joint finance committee meeting, where we're kind of all sort of.
I think, I think regardless what happens at the joint finance committee, we as a town here need to start looking at what we're able to allocate dollar-wise for education. And I think that's the reality of what we fold into conversations related to a funding formula and the joint finance committee. So, you know, the only way for us to understand what we're able to and what we're not able to allocate for dollars related to education is to start the budgeting process now with knowns that we have. And the knowns are that there will be a significant larger ask from our school department related to education. The knowns are that we will continue to try to accommodate our volunteer personnel, as well as several other initiatives related to our capital, five-year capital plan. You know, we have a five-year capital plan looking out as far as what our priorities are, but we need to translate that into operations and what our annual budget looks like so that we can not, at the last minute, decide what we're spending on education, but go into a meeting knowing what we can spend and what our priorities are.
So I agree with Councilman, the vice chair, if we're going to continue this, and I understand your point, and we say this time and time again, we understand, you know, these trials that are facing us that are the knowns, and we also have to have an approach leading up to February discussion of our capital plan for our budget, which includes the school budget, which is the JFC. We had talked about more dialogue with the school committee. We talked about more JFC meetings. I think we have to schedule those. But as far as coming back towards a meeting, are you asking to kind of put ideas that are already part of our budget to streamline so when the budget process comes, we're already talking about certain cuts or certain ideas that might save money along the way? I think that's what we're trying to, I don't know, Councilman Sweeney, if that's what you were trying to ask. That way, we have that approach when we all, you know, give these ideas every meeting, you know?
I guess I'm just trying to understand, what is the, I guess, Julie, I think we're, what we're trying to understand is the impact of, what would be the impact on certain areas of the town? So say, the state doesn't pass their budget, and we have some sort of, and just let me know if I'm on the, what you're trying to think about. If they don't pass a budget, we have a certain set of state aid, what's that impact to us? If they do pass a budget, that state aid, what's that impact? Car tax, like how that all works, and then maybe, maybe how that, so we know what we're doing with money?
Yeah, well, we kind of know it. It's potential if the budget doesn't pass, it's an over-million-dollar impact that I think will result in significant cuts at our schools related to non-essential services. And if we don't have a way to address that from a town's point of view, those cuts will occur. And I think we have to start having a conversation around what we're prepared to do.
Well, I think that we have to, and we have from time to time, had meetings particularly on capital budget and capital projects in the fall. And I think that we just need to maybe sometime, maybe in early October or so, have that meeting. We will have, and incorporate maybe more issues into it. I mean, I think at some point, the budget's going to be passed for the state. So whether or not it's going to go, my guess would be, would be retroactive back to July 1st, and then we'd get reimbursed back for that money. It doesn't mean that it makes it easier for going forward and having that, that sort of cash flow issue. But I do think we need to look at it, because we all know that we also have the money that we owe the school district, and if we're able to work out like a payment plan over X number of years, which is in question right now. So we have a lot of things going on in relation to the schools and with everything else as well. So maybe by early October, we'll have an idea if like, if the DEM money, the drainage money, like are we able to access some of this for some of our other big projects like Tanyard Brook and some of the other things that we talk about. So I don't think it hurts to start early. I just don't think that we will know every single detail. But I think the discussion of what the, I want to see what the priorities are, because they're all priorities. There's a lot of competing priorities. That's one of the difficult budget jobs that we have every year. And why I think it's important that the council looks at the big picture like that. But to start a little bit earlier and just start to look at those, or maybe brainstorm some ideas of where we could access money since we have, you know, since the lawsuit is settled, like for the last two years, we've said, we don't really know where we are because of the lawsuit. Now we know. And so that in and of itself is a $3 million hit, which, you know, it's already included this year, so it would, in theory, be level funded next year, but it is still additional money that we can't get to go somewhere else. So I just think we should, should plan on that in the fall and address all of these issues.
So I concur. Simply put, is, I think, a couple of things. One is that we do have ongoing conversations about budget. We have ongoing conversations about five-year capital plan. In fact, we had some recent conversations about those. I'm happy to continue this item to our next meeting, but I do believe that this is probably a little bit larger than what we could have as an agenda item for a council meeting. I think it's probably more appropriate to have a workshop specifically to talk about the challenges or the issues, massive issues with the state not passing their budget and how that represents in our budget. I think it's very appropriate that we have that conversation. And Andy, you are the JFC chair. I think Tim is absolutely correct, because I think those conversations also need to happen through joint finance, not at one or two meetings, but in September or October to speak about budgeting in regards to that. But as it pertains to the town, I think a workshop would probably be more appropriate, because I think this is a little bigger than just a, in fact, we just spent time not talking about one number, just the larger thought of it. So I think it's probably more appropriate, a workshop. So if we want to, if you'd like to continue it, certainly happy to do so. What's your thoughts?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're hopeful that there'll be a resolution towards the impasse. Maybe we can continue this to the next meeting, and if it is not resolved before next meeting, then we could schedule a workshop. Instead of scheduling a workshop at this time and then having to cancel the workshop. But I think it'd be good to continue this, one more meeting. And because if there are some impacts, if it isn't retroactive, and there are some things that this council should be aware of relating to that, I'd like to bring those to the attention of my colleagues here.
So we have a motion and a second to continue the August 23rd meetings. Are any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the request for executive session, which I'm assuming we'll take up at the conclusion of the public agenda. Following that, we have individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
So the meeting was short, my comments will be short. Congratulations once again to Bob Holt, someone who worked very hard for the town, and he's a great example of some of the phenomenal employees that we have that work for the town. They do almost all of what they do without anybody ever knowing what they do. Speaking of somebody who did exactly that, we lost a Bristolian recently, Jerry Madeiras, was 57 years old, he passed away. And you talk about a gentleman who was involved in so many things. I pulled up a couple of them. He was on the, he played horn in Generations. He was on the Bristol Fourth of July Committee. He was on the Bristol Fire Department, the Dreadnought Hook and Ladder Company. He was a Bristol Fire Police. He was Bristol Democratic Committee. He was a Bristol Elk. He just gave so much back, and he was the guy that worked in the kitchen and made the eggs and fried the fish and made the meatballs. So a great, another example of somebody who just gave so much back to the community and didn't ask for anything. He just, he just wanted to do what was, he believed was right for Bristol, and he was right. Did a great job. So we're going to miss him. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
Well, it's after the Fourth of July, and most of us think summer is over here in Bristol. But I'm looking at the event calendar on the Bristol website, and there's tons of events going on. So I encourage all of you to go out there and look at the different events that are going on. A lot of constituents have reached out to me in regards to Medicom and the bumpiness and the roughness of the road near Colt Plaza and Gooding. I reached out to our reps, and author Bovis from the DOT had commented that they're going to do some light paving over there. Believe it or not, the Veterans Home will be done in October, which is kind of exciting. But the bad news of it, 136 will not get paved until 2020. So, but in the meantime, that little, that rough, rough area will be, will be corrected a little bit, patched, but I think as Rhode Islanders, we're all kind of used to that a little bit. So, anyway, that's it. Have a good night.
Mr. Antisca?
So I learned that over 90% of net job growth is related to new business startups. And, you know, looking at some of the activity in Bristol, like more composites located on Buttonwood Street, and even back as far as Jordan Pond at CNC Fiber Glass 20 years ago, when he started, you know, Bristol has a unique opportunity to provide a venue where startups can begin a long lifecycle of growth and, in a way which supports our economy here in Bristol. So, you know, I think, you know, we can always do more in understanding what our existing businesses need. what our existing businesses need, as long, as well as do more in welcoming new businesses. And, you know, I think looking at some of the diversity of our economic base here, from manufacturing to the service industry, professional services, consulting, to the tourism and hospitality industry, there really is a lot to be thankful here in Bristol. But I think we all need to keep in the back of our minds, and at least I will continue to think about what we can do to ensure that businesses that are here continue, can continue to operate in a manner which enables them to be competitive. So, I just ask everyone to keep that in the back of their minds, as other communities struggle. I think we have a lot of great things going on here. So, that's what I have to offer. Thank you.
Ms. Perrell?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Steve, if you could, I know it's private property, and I know you've gotten, I think everybody's been contacted about this at one time or another, but the Dulph Avenue, I think it's 25 Dulph Avenue. It's, it's sort of like unkempt property, but it's private property. I don't know if Mr. Falcoa can take a look. I did drive by there. There was a lot of trash just kind of strewn about in front of it. And I know it's overgrown, et cetera, but that, I don't know if there's much we can do, but I think we could maybe look at the trash issue. If, I believe he's been there before. I think, I think it would be under his purview. But if you could ask him, or Mr. McBride, when they're back? Okay. That's number one. Number two, also wanted to just mention in the, you know, the passing of Richard Simpson, who was a local historian, who had written many, many books on Bristol history and the, in the Fourth of July Parade, and also history of many of our neighboring communities here in, as a matter of fact, I just ordered one of his books yesterday, last night, just to make sure that I had his latest on Bristol. And he passed away on Fourth of July Day, as he was waiting to, as they were waiting for him to come and be on the St. Mary's float that he had helped design. Certainly someone that had like a great background in, I think he, you know, with the military and in design, and was an artist. I think many of us know him as like an antique dealer, as well as a historian. So he certainly was, I think, recently, maybe within the last year or so, I think the, maybe the local paper wrote an article about him as a Renaissance man, with his, going back to his art. So, I just wanted to call to mind his passing. That would be like a great loss to Bristol and to those who keep track of our, our great history. The final thing is the Little Neck Boyle. Greg, when is that? It is the 13th, is it?
August 12th.
August 12th, and where could you get tickets?
You can get tickets after Harvick's Festival.
Okay, so, so that whole Harvick's Festival is coming up in August before our next meeting, and I would just encourage people to attend. It's like a great event with the blessing of the fleet, with stuffy competitions. I know our administrator entered into that last year. So we have the public stuffy competition and the professional, or so to speak, the restaurants, and a great Little Neck Boyle that the group puts on. So I just wanted to make reference of that. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
I'd like to thank the administrator. I know a couple of meetings back of addressing some low lion tree limbs along the sidewalks, and we have a lot of people come in for the summertime for our tourism. And I think if we could talk to the Director of Public Works while his men are out, or any town employees, since all our department heads are here, if they can make like a silent list, and then we can, you know, really keep on top of it because every, some areas you go and they are still low. So if we could just have a list that we can approach that way, I think that would be a good idea. But I thank you for addressing those others that I specified. As far as, I don't know if I'm stepping on any toes, maybe that's why you can't talk about it, Councilman Tiska, but we talk about education, we talk about capital projects, we talk about how much money is facing this council, and that's why I keep reminding department heads like Diane or any of us in the administration as a council, to secure those grants that are out there. The DEM grant alone, we can secure $400,000. And now 14.7 available through the Rhode Island Boat Infrastructure Grant through the Marine Trades, I think we have to go after too. And, and I don't know if we can attach that to projects on the back end, like what we invested for Prudence Ferry, because it's on the harbor, or anything associated with the Marines, or, you know, we have to be creative, is what I'm saying. Because if you take $400,000, $400,000, and that's our money, it comes off the top end of the real important things that are still on our priority list. A lot of residents approached me lately of a service that was provided to them at the landfill for many years, when they changed their car oil, and they would go dispose the motor oil at a container up at a landfill. So a lot of residents come to me now and say, "Councilman Stewart, why am I being charged? I bring my oil, I want to recycle it, and I'm being charged to dispose it because we have to, in return now, the state mandates of that system that we have to go through with the state for the oil." So, on the next council agenda, Mr. Administrator and through the Director of Public Works, I would like a study and a discussion that I'm putting on the agenda for a waste oil recycling program. And it is throughout some of the states where we have our Department of Public Works, where they're very active with a municipal garage, where they have a fleet of trucks that they service. And if we can secure a grant to actually invest and buy that unit that would recycle the used oil, we cannot charge our residents. We can recycle our own motor oil on our town fleet, and in return, if we get the proper unit, it can heat, and we can have a heating mechanism to save on the fuel cost of heating our buildings at DPW, or if it was to be at the landfill for, you know, a specified heating source. So, it can, you know, address many factors. And like I said, if we can actually secure a grant to purchase that and then reduce the cost, because this was said to me, and I know you're all going to think the same way I thought, is the person said, "You know, you charge us to, you know, take our oil after we do our oil change. You know, there's going to be some people that don't want to pay. So what do you think they're going to do with the oil?" And we have to be, you know, environmentally conscientious. I know it's a cost to us, we have to, you know, put it on, onto our taxpayers. But if this is a type of program, after we study and investigate it, and we can actually ascertain and succeed at it to accomplish this, I think it will serve us a lot going forward. With that, I hope everyone's having a good summer, a safe summer. Thank you, Mike Davis. Thank you, Archie Martins. Everybody who came out tonight, and everyone tuning at home. Thank you.
Town Administrator Agenda Items.
Thank you. Things are going well. The summer camp at Parkson Recreation is very active. We did have a minor sewer leak in the sewer main that leaves the property. It was spotted quickly, and the water was shut down. Jose responded. There's a temporary line feeding the recreation beach building, and as soon as the camp is over, we'll be prepared to replace the service main. A few events around town. The Lipizan Stallions at Colts State Park, August 5th and 6th. A little bit of history with the horses, which is kind of special to have here in Bristol. Concerts on the Common is continuing Thursday nights right through August. Looking forward to working with Arts in Common, although they're no longer interested in leasing Wally School. I spoke to their executive director today, and we're really looking forward to partnering together to continue with the use of Wally School. So, things are looking up. Thank you, Councilman Stewart, for mentioning the trees. We have a very large list of trees. We're not forgetting any of them, as far as I know. In fact, this year, we've started using DPW to help our contractor to save some money. But we're going to shape them right and do it, do it right when we, when we do get involved with the trees. Other than that, I'm happy in the direction that we're going. Our department heads are very, very engaged. In fact, some of the topics that came up tonight, today, Silver Creek Bridge. I know we already had a meeting with DOT, and we wanted to make sure that the outflow was addressed with the replacement of that bridge at Silver Creek. And things are looking up. I think we're on the right track, and things are real busy downtown, which is good on the weekends, if you've driven down there on a weekend. Side note, we open the former visitor center, the Burnside Building, for Saturdays for a few hours. We had a lot of requests from our merchants that on Saturdays, we have that opened up. So it's open, the facility is there, there's some brochures in there, and it's, it's been two weekends now, and it's been pretty busy. So, again, thank you, and enjoy the rest of your summer.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we have a request for the Citizens Public Forum from Denise Webster, who is present. She would like to address the council regarding air cannons.
Certainly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I would just like to refer back to the issue, which I think some of the council, you know, most of the council members probably remember on this from last year. And which many of our neighbors, including myself, are very grateful for your input. We should have sought you out much sooner. We tried for many years on our own to make something happen that was amenable to both the farm and the joining neighborhood. And I was here last June to find out what the use of the permit was going to be, and you had intervened and met with the owners of the farm, and we thought that we were probably good to go. And we had about 10 days, seven to 10 days of the air cannons, and then they stopped because apparently he had gone with either URI, or he had used other, other methods, and which we were very great, very, very grateful for. And we appreciated your, your support, especially Mr. Colero and Mr. Sweeney, who had met with the neighbors that were concerned probably almost two years ago. There were about 35 families represented in the Kickemewett, Harrison Avenue, Wilcox Lane area. I didn't do it this June because I guess I thought maybe it will continue. However, that is not the case. And starting last Thursday, we had the beginning again of the air cannons going off. And so, my basic question before I make some comments would be if you are aware of it, number one, that that is going on. And if you are, does anyone know what the parameters are for the use of the permit for air cannons for this season? In other words, do you know how long he plans to use it? I don't know if anyone here knows the answer to that or not, but that's my first question.
I personally don't know. I, this is going back a couple of years, as you had mentioned, and I remember talking with DEM and the owner of the farm, and, and I don't recall there being a limitation in the season or the amount of time that it can be used. If, but this is, I would have to do some research again, to be quite honest.
Yeah. Is that a, does anyone know, is that a permit that, how often that is updated? The permit, is that a yearly permit, or?
Mr. Administrator?
All I can, the information I can relay to you is from a couple of years ago. I know when I was on the police department, annually, I would go out with the Division of Agriculture, and we would meet with the neighbors. And back then, the documentation that agriculture had was the Right to Farm Act. And we try to work with the farmer, but the Division of Agriculture understands the hardship with the crows and how in a matter of an hour, they can wipe out a good amount of corn. I, this year, it was pretty quiet. I actually live in that area initially. I think they were using a different deterrent system involving a laser, which was really quiet. But I didn't, this is the first I'm hearing of it this year. It seemed to be pretty quiet, but if you're saying that, it's back. But I know it's very difficult to prevent them. They do have a right to preserve their, their crops, and there is statute that protects that right. So, you know, what I can do is I can call, tomorrow, I'll call Agriculture, as Jim Larson was a person I used to work with. But I'll call him, and I'll let him know that there's some concerns. If you don't mind me asking, what street do you want?
Kickemewett Avenue.
Okay.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not recalling the name of the person that I spoke to. It could have been him last, last year.
Ken Ayers is the other person that is the primary contact there for the agriculture portion of DEM.
It might have been Jim, Jim Larson's name sounds familiar, but I did speak with someone there last year. And apparently, the permits are written very loosely as a needed basis. So, you know, I believe that that really gives an awful lot of leeway to each farmer. And while I love farmers, I do, and I want to support them, not, that doesn't really mean that every farmer will do it with the best intent in mind, unfortunately. And we, as, as neighbors to the farm, have worked very hard many years, I would say probably seven to eight years, before even bringing the concern to the town, to go to him individually, as our concerns were, to see if we could work with him directly before bringing it to a public forum. And unfortunately, our efforts were not met with what we felt as reasonable results. Matter of fact, we, it was usually louder, more frequent, for longer periods of time. So, it was really, unfortunately, I think we were overly tolerant for many, many years before we came to the town council to ask for some kind of relief. And as an example, I would like to just refer to a few comments, well, one in particular that was in the paper, that was made by the owner of the farm, about using different techniques. It was in the Phoenix. I couldn't tell you exactly what month it was. But it was a discussion, and the farmer's response about using different techniques was basically, and I'm paraphrasing here, that it didn't matter what it was, it won't work. So, to me, that indicates a lack of willingness to, you know, to even make the effort when you're giving the outcome before making the attempt. I also would like to add another comment through a family member, it was his son, that I was so happy that we had such a quiet summer last year, that I actually bought corn at the end of the season and thanked him personally for, for having found quieter methods, you know, so that, you know, our neighbors, you know, could enjoy it. And his response was not a happy one. And he basically responded, I'm paraphrasing again, is that, "Well, we'll see what happens." So, I really got the distinct figure that, you know, feeling that, that this effort that everyone, including town council members, made on our behalf, you know, may or may not sustain itself through this season. And as an example of my, my concern is just to give you an example of how today was. Today, the air cannons went, started off at 6:30 this morning. They average 54 to 60 times per hour. And today, as I was leaving to come up here, which was 7:20, the cannons were still going. So that's longer than a 12-hour day. So I'm multiplying this times 13 hours. So I am taking the 54 to 60 times an hour as an average, and that means that we are hearing these cannons 702, 702 times to 720 times a day. And then, it runs seven days a week. So, when you multiply the 702 times, the seven days a week, we are hearing these cannons over 5,000 times a week. Now, I understand that the agriculture, you know, permit or whatever, DEM, whoever's giving it to them, but I do, in reading some of your own, the town's own noise regulations, and talking about the health of the community, I certainly think that this action that people are being subjected to certainly falls under the noise regulations. I don't know how we can communicate that to the DEM, but it certainly does have an impact on the neighbors who live in this area. And I invite all of you to come down and visit with, you know, you're with us anytime you would like, between the hours of 6:30 a.m. and you would like between the hours of 6:30 a.m. and 7, 7:30 p.m. And you'll just come and sit for 10 minutes and you'll hear it on average of nine to 12 or 13 times per 10 minutes. So it is a concern and I've spoken to neighbors and this meeting kind of came up kind of quickly because it actually, I would have had to have something on the agenda last Wednesday, but it didn't start till Thursday and your meeting was, was tonight. I just would like some assistance to create the same type of results we were able to have last summer. I mean, he was able to sell his corn. I had a policeman, I had called the station one time for a noise meter check and a policeman came down and unfortunately, he didn't bring the noise meter with him, but that was my reason for calling. But the chief assured me at that meeting that if it started up again, that we would be able to have a meter check. So I'm asking tonight if, Mr. Chief Canario, if someone can come down and, and take two different readings, one, you know, for ambient sound, which is without the air cannons going off and another reading with them going off. Because the noise ordinance does indicate that the sound is supposed to be ambient noise plus five decibels. So I don't know what the ambient noise is and I don't know who, somebody needs to come and take. I, you know, I need data. I'm looking for data so that we can somehow approach DEM and, and come to a reasonable, that's what I'm looking for, a reasonable.
Common ground.
Common ground, yes. Common ground between the neighbors and there are others, I have spoken to other neighbors in the last day or two and there are concerns, unfortunately, not everyone was able to come tonight, it's short notice. But I do want to let you know that, you know, we, we are concerned and, you know, we will continue to be involved in the process because we know that when the town gets involved, that there were positive results. And so we're hoping for that. So I was just wondering if you knew how long the cannons might go? Because if we knew it was like a week to 10 days, I believe we could live with that. You know, we did, that's what happened last summer and we were able to join, enjoy the rest of our summer and be out in the yard and not have to close ourselves up in the house and turn on the air conditioner and still hear the noise. So there is air, there is a, a disturbance of the peace issue somehow. And I don't know how you communicate that to, to the DEM because I know they give the permit out, but, so I'm wondering, Chief, would we be able to have someone to come down and do some readings for us?
I think that's a starting point, but as you heard from the administrator in the council, I think we need to approach this from different avenues. And I understand what you're trying to do is get to a common ground where there's some type of solution, whether it's a temporary one now, that would lead us into a permanent one. So I assure you that I will speak to the administrator. I will have a sergeant or lieutenant reach out to you in the next day or so, because this isn't obviously something that happened yesterday and it's going to end tomorrow. And let's see what we can do with some help from the state, from the owner of the property. Let's see if we can have someone maybe speak to him, find out what his intentions are and come, and someone will report back to you. Give us a couple of days and we'll get back to you. I just ask you to be patient and understand, we're going to do the best we can, but we are limited because the state does have regulations and they supersede anything that we're really going to be able to do down here in town. But we're going to do our best, I assure you that. Okay?
I appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention again.
Thank you for your help.
Certainly.
Ms. Perillo, if I may go back to my prerogative? Am I allowed to do that? I forgot something very important. I wanted to note some actions by two of our sewer department employees last, last week, actually it was the week of July 5th. There was a fire, actually some type of an explosion on State Street in our, on a Saturday morning, our sewer crew was out doing some work and they had the water jet truck and there was a fire in an occupied house and they were able to put the fire out with the equipment that they had. So it was pretty, pretty cool.
Very good.
I think they may have saved, saved some people. I'm not exactly sure, but the incident is still under investigation, but.
Once that concludes, maybe they could come to our next council meeting.
Yeah, it was Norbert Andrade and Brian Martin. Sorry for not bringing it up earlier, but I meant to, I meant to and.
That's great.
I thought they did a great job and they, the sewer department, they do, they do a fine job. You don't hear many complaints from them and we appreciate it.
Motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to 4246-5A2 litigation relative to the regional school district litigation.
So moved. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good night, everyone.